Welcome to the city council meeting. I hope this microphone is working. I am delighted to start the meeting with celebrating Benison Bakery's 75th anniversary in the city of Evanston. This is a proclamation, whereas Benison's Bakery, a high-quality, full-line bakery, with emphasis on European-style pastries, cookies, and custom-decorated cakes, has been an Evanston Northshore institution for the past 75 years. And, whereas in 1938 Larry Benison and his baking savvy came from Janesville, Wisconsin, and opened Benison's Bakery at 1,000 Davis Street, Evanston, Illinois. And, whereas Mr. Benison provided high-quality offerings in the bakery, made with cream, real butter, fresh buttermilk, and freshly cracked eggs. And, whereas Guy Downer, who had worked for Standard Brands, originally sold coffee to the bakery, and in 1967 purchased the business from the Benison family and expanded the product line. And, whereas Guy Downer and his family continue the tradition and are proud of the high-quality image left by Larry Benison that people have come to expect and enjoy. And, whereas Benison's Bakery is one of the few bakeries in the country to employ two certified master bakers, one being Guy Downer's son, Jory, and the other is Efrain Torado. And, whereas Guy and Jory still walk in flower-covered shoes, baking through the night, to assure freshness every day, the same devil's food cake, made with real buttermilk, and their pumpkin pie, still made with fresh eggs and whole milk, are still available. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Tisdale, Mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim August 12th, 2013, as Benison's Bakery Day in the city of Evanston, in celebration of its 75th anniversary. And I would like to have Guy Downer, Jory and Patty Downer, Guy Junior Downer, and Ann Benison, the daughter of Larry, please come forward and accept this proclamation. Congratulations. I have to ask, can we get one of the three generations? Again, we'll ship a lot, yeah, three. Go. Oh.
Actually, I grew up in northern Indiana, and during World War II, I served in the Navy and went to Navy radio school at Northwestern. This was my first exposure to the Northshore area. And I fell in love with Evanston at that time, and it was beyond my fondest imagination that someday I would live and work here. And it's been a lifetime of enjoyment, and this is a culmination, and we thank you very, very much.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask if you'd stand up here with me as we bring up Glenn Crabtree. Glenn? It's hard to believe, but Glenn Crabtree is going to be retiring from the city of Evanston in mere hours. How many hours?
Uh, let's see.
Not that you're counting.
Uh, let's, we're about, let's see, seven, twenty, so I say about five.
Five hours away. Well, Glenn, you started with us in 1977. Evanston was a very different place then. You have persevered through thick and thin, through storms, through blizzards, through every imaginable plight practically, I would think. Famine and pestilence, perhaps not, 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 yeah, that was a little mad. But Glenn, we're going to miss you very much. For those of you who don't know, Glenn has been so instrumental in everything you see out in the community. The maintenance of the streets, making sure that the trash and recycling is picked up, and probably most important, and what you'll be remembered for the most, is snow. Is that you made sure that when it came down, it got picked up, and it didn't matter the day, of day or night, it happened, and that's probably your best legacy, because I think everyone knows in Evanston, it gets done. And it's gotten done for many years because of Glenn's hard work. So Glenn, on behalf of the mayor and the city council and your colleagues here, we wish you all the best in the next chapter of your life. You will be missed. You have left Evanston a better place than you found it. So congratulations.
Glenn, I hope you will miss us as much as we'll miss you. And I wish you the very, very best in retirement. You have more than earned it, but you are going to be missed.
Thank you very much. Ah! I'd like to thank the city of Evanston providing me an opportunity to have a career. I've loved working for the city of Evanston. It fit me. It fit who I am, what I do, and I really appreciate the opportunity. It's time to go. You know, I've done my time, but I'm definitely going to miss most of the people here. You know, I'm going to miss most of them. I mean, the friendships and the kinships that we've had has been tremendous, from all departments. I'm going to miss the troubleshooting stuff. I'm going to miss the blizzards. That was fun, you know. I'm going to miss that midnight call to say, "Okay, we got such-and-such going on. Can you come out?" Yes, I'm going to miss that. Now, the day-to-day, y'all can have it. But, once again, I want to thank everyone for allowing me this opportunity, and if things go according to plan, we might be able to talk soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, wait. Let me say one more thing. I apologize. I have two people that I need to make sure that they know is the reason that I'm here. Well, actually, there's three. My first and second are my daughters Heather Nicole Crabtree-Ransom and Aishma Brey. Please stand up back there, please. Okay. Those two, you know, those two got me through the first half of my career. So, I mean, seriously, without them, you know how it goes, baby needs a new pair of shoes? Okay. That made me make sure I came and made it to work. And once they got hit the growing stage, and I went like this and went boom, the second half of my career was my wife Stephanie, who's in the back standing up there. And this is Stephanie Crabtree. And there is no question in my mind that I definitely would not have made it without her. Supportively, lovingly, kicking me in the butt way, you know, but she was my partner. And she's my partner now, and that's the other reason I get to retire, because I might be able to be a kept man. But anyway, of course, you see my grandkids back there, my son-in-law, but you know, that's Coach Ransom back there. He's the freshman coach with the ETHS as part of some of his other duties. And then we have, I have Homie, and I have Ms. Diva, and I have Ms. Drama. Those are my grandkids. That's Kamal, Zuri, and Leila. And some people think, just because I'm retired, that that's what I'm going to do, but they got another thing coming. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hi, everybody. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Public Works Director, and was the Superintendent of Streets and Sanitation. And Glenn reported directly to me. And I have to say, probably day one to maybe day 451, we fought just about every day. But I will say that there was never any doubt about how much he cared about the city of Evanston and its residents. He, everything that I do is not me, it's him. More often than not, those phone calls, those emails that I get, when it's fast response required, Glenn is the one. We had a water main break that we, on Davis Street, and that's, this is a story that I relate just last week, and I was actually walking home and walked into a complete traffic nightmare. The people are, the pedestrians were upset, and they had no idea I was the Public Works Director, walking down the street. And so I got to hear all sorts of things about how they felt, the traffic was all backed up, and I was making phone calls. Everybody was busy, and nobody would answer. And I was reluctant to call him, because he was retiring in a week, but I didn't have a choice. And I called him, and he could just hear the stress in my voice, and he was here, just like that. He has never once said no to the city of Evanston, except for those three little grandchildren back there. There's a timeframe, and one day a week, that, you know, he is not available. He will still answer the phone call. He's not coming anywhere. But he will answer and give me advice on who else I should call, perhaps, instead of him. So Glenn, I just want to say, thank you very much. You made my job easier. I have no idea what I'm going to do on September 11th. I just don't know. So, you know, thank you for all your service.
... which represents who he is. Now he's supervisor of sanitation, and he is also one of our snow commanders. Twelve-hour shift, Don is the other one. Also here support Glenn as well. So thank you very much, thank you very much, family, for phoning him out to me, and now you get to have him back. You can't send him back, because you don't want him.
Thank you very much.
Just a minute. Alderman Braithwaite would like to say something.
I just wanted to share a few words, and I've only had three years to work with you, but clearly after 35 years of service with your peers here in the office, here in the room, we know that you've been respected. In addition to that, the one thing that we didn't hear was the amount of years and dedication to the youth in Evanston by directing the summer youth program. And so, on behalf of all those youth that you and the leadership that you've provided have had an opportunity to impact and mold their lives, I just want to say thank you. So your presence and your leadership will be missed, and good luck in your second stage. Yeah.
And Mr. Crabtree, I just want to add to that. Of course, I've seen you here since 2005, but I've known you for a way long time before that, as well as the family. But I just want to say how much I appreciate what you've done for the youth, and thank you for your last project at Fleetwood, Georgia. And I went over to look at it the other day, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you so very, very much, with all of you guys, I know, but thank you so very much for that.
The last thing I am supposed to do is call upon the Chamber of Commerce for the Burger War and Salad Skirmish. On a lighter note and a delicious note, I want to bring to your attention that we've had a Burger War, and this year we've added a Salad Skirmish. It's been going on since August 7th, but we know everybody's been busy with Labor Day and holidays, so we know, we want you to know, you can still go to over 25 restaurants. We're going to be handing you a map. We have these little postcards that has a QR code. We want you to visit those, eat the burgers and the salads, and vote. And then we're going to be naming the winners of taste, creativity, and presentation at our mashup, which is a week from tomorrow, on the beach of Northwestern. So, thank you again, and I hope that you will help us encourage the restaurants to have their creativity and taste, and we are really fortunate to have such a variety of restaurants in Evanston. And where is Marion? And I, we brought salads, and we have Marion, who's our, who's a really good sport, and wearing our hamburger costume. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Marion, are you going to come up to the front? Don't you want to be on TV in that outfit, Marion? All right. Thank you very much. City manager, do you have public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Earlier this evening, we recognized Glenn Crabtree, who's retiring from the city. Many of you were here for that. He'll be greatly missed, and great service to the city of Evanston. Next, I'd like to ask Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, to come up. We're getting ready to gear up, believe it or not, for our fiscal 2014 budget process. We have a series of community events coming up over the next several weeks, which Mr. Lyons will detail.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Green. Just have a very few slides. Just because our budget is stabilizing doesn't mean we are slowing down with the amount of outreach that we like to do for citizens. So each year, we do try to reach different segments by trying a different way of outreach to the community. So if you may recall, in the years past, we've been at the grocery stores, or we've had meetings in our community centers. So this year, we are looking at a series of meetings where staff will be at these locations, coffee shops, or similar such institutions, for several hours, with some signage saying, "Here's what we're here for, this is what we're here to talk about," and to ask and answer questions regarding the 2014 budget process. That is scheduled for the 21st. September 19th, we'll also have a virtual town hall meeting with the city manager, and as noted there, on our Facebook page, people can contact the town hall meeting that way. If folks cannot reach any one of our meetings in any of those given types, as is the case in the past, they may reach us on the web at cityofevanston.org/budget, by email at budgetinquiries@cityofevanston.org, by Facebook, facebook.com.
Excuse me. Marty, Alderman Rainey has a question.
Marty, on the virtual budget session with the city manager, will people tweet in, or call in, or text in, or email in? How will there be interaction? I, might be a stupid question, because I haven't read this stuff yet.
Alderman Rainey, members of the council, people will be able to send their questions through their Facebook account. So we've done Twitter Town Halls, the mayor did a Facebook Town Hall, what, six or eight months ago? So it happens on Facebook. So we won't be doing anything specifically on Twitter. I think we may have missed on the slide, Marty, unless it's coming up, the in-person budget meeting?
We may have missed on the slide.
So next Wednesday evening here in the council chamber, or actually not here at the council chambers, it's at, I-
No, you're going to get, it's at Fleetwood. No, we did Fleetwood.
It's at Chandler, I think.
Chandler, Chandler Newburger.
So we're going to have an in-person budget meeting at Chandler Newburger Center, a week from Wednesday, the 18th. But the Facebook will be, just if you're on Facebook, you'll be able to participate that way.
It is on the, it's on my last slide for meetings.
I've never done a Facebook Town Hall, so I apologize. Perhaps Mayor Tisdale, who's an expert at this, might be able to-
So you type in comments? Is that how you-
People send messages through Facebook, and we answer them, and they're displayed in such a way that people can see questions asked and answered.
I like that.
Erica, did I, Erica Starley's still here. Did I answer that about right?
Yeah, so just going to add one more, six, three questions.
Erica Starley, our Community Engagement Division Manager. As of September 1, we actually changed the name of the division from Citizen Engagement to Community Engagement. We thought that was a much more inclusive title, so she's now the Community Engagement Division Manager. Erica, good evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and Clerk Green. As we did with the mayor's town hall earlier this year, we did take questions in advance at an email address. So if people wanted to submit questions and then just, you know, visually participate and not actually type anything in on the day of the event, they could participate that way, as well as we allow people to ask questions during the event through Facebook.
There you go. Thank you.
Technology's changed. I seem to remember doing that with the cable program, where we took the questions in advance, as well as had-
Have people called in? Yes.
Well, I think it was because we had a different level of digits of participation. We, so after all of the electronic and social media methods, then our future budget sessions, so these are the dates of importance. That is a budget due to you all on that date, October 11th. Council budget discussions start on the 21st, that Monday. That is a third Monday, so that will be the major agenda item for that night, without other committees. Then on Saturday, the 26th, is the city council capital tour, which is a public meeting as well. So we will have more than just the council touring capital facilities on that day.
So we'll have an opportunity for residents to RSCP, so we can make sure we have enough buses to take people around. So we'll meet here at the Civic Center and spend the morning going around in a bus to various sites to look at proposed capital projects.
Making myself a note on that last comment.
Alderman Grover.
I just wonder if, Mr. Lyons, maybe you could send out an email to us with all of these dates and the different things, so we can fold them into a newsletter, award newsletter or something like that, or just put them on my calendar. That'd be great. Thank you.
And lastly, these dates, so November 4th is, we'll be having goal-setting again with a consultant, and I think tying the budget discussions into the goal-setting as well, especially given the focus of capital and operating in the goals. So this will be a very timely session. And then finally, on November 11th, the second Monday and first council meeting of the month, this has been the similar schedule as we've had the last two years, where the first meeting in November, we are doing the public hearing, the first look at the budget, and then we go to budget adoption the following week. As is the case with our change to the fiscal year being the calendar year, we set the budget, we set the levy the next week, and we are able to then have our, one of our major revenue sources show up in the year in which we budgeted, which we didn't have in years past, so. Any questions regarding the schedule? We will get that email out and get it also posted online.
Great. Thank you, Marty. Lastly, we have our annual Evanston Day at the Northwestern University football game. We've changed it up a little bit this year, and Martha Logan from our Community Engagement Division is here with a guest, and I'll let Martha start us off and introduce her guest.
Good evening. The city of Evanston, Northwestern University, downtown Evanston, ETHS, and the Evanston Chamber of Commerce have all joined forces to promote this month's Kits and Cats Week Go Wild activities. Those will take place from September 16th through the 21st. Those are formerly called Paint Evanston Purple. Early that week, a few fire hydrants will be painted purple in downtown Evanston, and NU student athletes will visit four local schools to participate in Read Across Evanston. The Kits and Cats Week kickoff event will take place from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. on Thursday, September 19th, in downtown Evanston. Sherman Avenue will be closed to vehicular traffic between Clark Street and Church Street, and some businesses will be offering discounts to those wearing purple, so be sure to come in your purple gear. Off fans at the kickoff will be treated to spirited performances by NU and ETHS marching bands, as well as Northwestern's Wild Pride and the ETHS cheerleaders. There will be games and activities, plus performances by the Music Institute of Chicago, and special guest speakers will include elected officials and coaches. At 7:00 p.m., the area's totally fun and cool cover band named Stash will bring their unique twist to pop music, ranging from 80's rock anthems to current radio hits. And they have quite a following. Their fans come and hold their hands under their noses for stashes, or wear fake stashes. For more information about the kickoff, visit cityofevanston.org/kitsandcats. And with me tonight is Jacob Schmidt of Northwestern University, Director of Player Development, and he'll tell you about the football games that will be taking place that week.
Thank you, Martha. In addition to everything Martha just detailed, there will be two big football games. Friday night, September 20th, Evanston Township High School hosts Maine West. That is at 7:30 at Evanston Township High School. And then Saturday, the 21st, your Northwestern Wildcats will play host to the Maine Bears. The Northwestern Wildcats are currently 2-0, soon to be 3-0, currently ranked 16th in the country, soon to be probably 14th or 15th in the country. We had about 38,000 at our game two days ago. Hope to obviously bypass that number this weekend, but we'll see. We surely will when Ohio State comes to town on October 5th. But hopefully you can all make it out. 2:30 kickoff, that has been officially announced, will be airing on the Big Ten Network. So hopefully you can all make it with your purple on, and yes, there are discounted tickets. So if you go online and there's a promotion code, they're $15. So practically free to come watch the 15th-ranked football team in the country, so, pretty good deal. So with that, Mayor Tisdale, what's that?
NUsports.com.
NUsports.com for all the info that I forgot to tell you guys. So, Mayor Tisdale, council members, thank you, and go Cats.
Mr. Schmidt, where did you play football?
I played right here, at Northwestern University. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, city manager. City clerk, do you have communications for us?
I just have one, and then I forgot one of my, I have to invite one of my friends to come up for it. But this Friday, the 13th, yeah, this is the 13th of Friday, isn't it? This Friday, the 13th, is the Kiwanis Peanut Day. So we'll be offering peanuts to anyone who want to take the peanuts and just give a donation. We don't ask for any money, but it's just a donation and grab the peanuts. I'd ask Jim Wolenski, the president of Kiwanis, to come forward, because I forgot, it's another event we're having on the 8th of October, I think, but I can't remember. I misplaced the posters.
Come right ahead, Mr. Wolenski. You know the way.
Thank you, Mayor Tisdale, city manager Bob Kowitz, Honorable Alderman, and fellow Kiwanian Clerk Green. As Rodney said, Kiwanis has a couple of major fundraisers in the next four weeks. The first one, I'll just repeat what Rodney said, Friday is our traditional peanut day. We scheduled it for Friday, the 13th, just to prove that there's really nothing unlucky about Friday, the 13th, and we hope all of you will help us support that. And Kiwanians will be all over downtown Evanston, at the metro stations, L-stations, passing out peanuts, and hopefully collecting donations. The other event that Rodney wanted to talk about, that I will, is that on Tuesday, October 8th, Evanston Township High School Athletic Department and the Kiwanis Club of Evanston is partnering for what we're calling the Fall Pizza Fest. It'll be held at Giordano's from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it will be for the benefit of the Evanston Township High School summer camps, as well as the Kiwanis Foundation, which helps us do all of our charitable work in Evanston. Advanced ticket sales are $15 for adults, children under 12 are $6, and includes all the pizza and all the beverage you can drink. So, and I got this idea from Alderman Rainey, not the Pizza Fest, but the guest server idea. And so we would ask any and all Aldermen and city officials, if you'd like to join us and be guest servers, please contact Rodney or myself, and we would love to have you, and look forward to a great evening. Remember, the K in Kiwana stands for kids. The Kiwanis Club in Evanston supports everything from Evanston Youth Baseball, to the Evanston Community Picnic, to scholarship- Community Picnic, to scholarships at Evanston High School. Somewhere in there, between $15,000 and $20,000 a year. We can't do it without these types of fundraisers, and we can't do it without the support of all Evanstonians. So if you can come out to either of those events or both of them, please do so, and thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my announcements. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next is Citizen Comment. You each have three minutes, and the first two speakers are Matt Smith and Betty Esther. Please give your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Matt Smith. I currently reside at 2645 Lincolnwood. I am the current Union President for the Evanston Firefighters Association as well. I'm here before you to extend a sincere thank you to the city management, all the elected officials, and the pension boards for the extreme effort that everyone has displayed over the last several years on improving the financial status of our pension funds. Before you tonight is another opportunity to continue that, that great tradition, and I'm here to show you and tell you that it goes a long way to show the support of the aldermen and the city management for the former, present, and also future firefighters and police officers. It makes the difficult, dangerous job that we do every day much more palatable to know that we are supported by the city government. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2113, 21, 2031 Church Street. I might be moving, so you might be happy, but right now I'm still at 2031 Church Street. I'm here tonight to speak on H2, and what I am here is to offer a suggestion for an amendment that should go with this resolution as per, excuse me. Excuse me, is per page 20, 22, 524 of the council package. Thank you. It states, in the last paragraph, the first dotted item says the term, "The effective date will be backdated to July the 1st," and will affect all of that. We want, me and my friends, would like to have this change to say that the effective date will be as of the date of signing of this resolution, and will be affected for the, for indefinitely. So that's what we would like for you to think about. I will be at the school liaison meeting tomorrow to offer this, the same suggestion and many other suggestions in how to redraft this resolution. Thank you. Also, one other thing, I noticed in Mr. Lyons' presentation for the upcoming budget meeting in every place, the site where they will be in the community, I did not see a site in my community. I did not see anything south of Church Street. I saw everything, all other ward, but nothing in the fifth ward. We have a lovely place, which is called Buku, which does do have lots of events and things there. So if you could schedule one there, I will make sure you have some people there. So if you could put us on the list, that would be great. Thank you, and thanks for the word.
Thank you. Next is June Adrisky, Jim Wolenski, or did Jim finish? Barbara Janes and Mary Rosensky.
In the August 20th Wall Street Journal, there was an article, "Why Shouldn't Princeton Pay Taxes?" We could substitute the word Northwestern here. I was told by someone, the city council members have already seen this article because someone's already given it to them. What's interesting in the article, many universities already give substantial payments versus taxes. Northwestern does not give the city hardly any money. Brown is giving almost $10 million a year to Providence, and Providence wants actually more money. North, and you can read that in the article. Northwestern recently sold a house to the city to put Trader Joe's up for $700,000. Why didn't they just give this to the city? It's not like the property really had anything to do with their land use. Council members appear to like to accommodate Northwestern's needs when we gave up some of our parkland so they could build their visitor's center on city property. It's really no wonder Northwestern doesn't really want to give us any money if you're going to accommodate their needs. I go down Sheridan Road and Northwestern is repairing three of their buildings, fixing the stone and tuck pointings, similar to Harley-Clark. And yet we need Harley-Clark done, and we don't have any money. Maybe the alderman, who is an employee at Northwestern, could ask Northwestern to give them, us some money to fix Harley-Clark. Frankly, Northwestern has no interest in giving us money when the mayor bakes some cookies, and basically we give them our money. I would suggest the city tell Northwestern that we're going to close down the fire station on Central Street by Evanston Hospital, which I happen to live nearby, because I don't think we need it anyway, and basically tell Northwestern to come up with the money to operate that fire station, which is close to probably $2 million. And basically Northwestern's small contributions of vehicles does not even come close to $2 million a year that it's done. And I think frankly Northwestern might then take an interest in trying to give the city some money. And I don't believe there's any real issue with life safety if we shut that station down. The city's really probably gold-plated the situation. So I think aldermen better think about it, because frankly, you've got nothing from Northwestern. You know, these silly little things you're talking about, painting fire hydrants purple, you know, that's potable water. By the way, it's non-potable water, so it's pretty silly. So if that's, no, that's what we do here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Janes. I live at 802 Colfax, and I'm here representing No Park Sale. And I sent each one of you last night one of these flyers, and I just want to publicly, I know some of you have important meetings that night, but I would like to encourage all Evanston residents to please come to our community meeting on September 18th on the fourth floor of the Civic Center. And this is your opportunity to give input on potential future community public uses for the Harley-Clark facility. And I would like to have all of you, you all have a lot to think about, but another thing to think about is that whatever parameters you might set for the use of Harley-Clark should be within the zoning code and by, abiding by the lakefront master plan and the city's comprehensive plan. No Park Sale since the July 22nd city council meeting has been busy investigating similar mansions that were going to be torn down, or something was going to happen to them, and now are valuable community assets. And I have to tell you, having, I haven't seen all of them, but Harley, the Evanston Arts Center, Harley-Clark, whatever you want to call it, hands down, is in the most beautiful setting of any of the other mansions that we have seen. And so it is really a beautiful asset to the city, which we should preserve for the use of the community. So I encourage everyone to come out to that meeting and put forth your ideas so that we can move forward to get a viable public use for that building. Thank you very much. And I don't think Mary is here.
Thank you. I don't see Mary Rosensky, but if you're here, Mary, say something. Okay. That concludes public comment. And next, we have Special Orders of Business.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, two items. First, Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works, is here. Suzette has been working to develop a plan for our street resurfacing projects for the fiscal 2014 year. She's met, I believe, with each of you. We've coordinated our lists of streets in most need with Capitol Projects for Water and Sewer, and Suzette and Dave Stonebeck, our Utilities Director, have worked diligently over the last several weeks to come up with a plan that you will be seeing this evening. We would ask that you review the plan, provide any comments that you'd have this time on the plan, and we'll take all of that and continue moving forward as we prepare the proposed 2014 CIP, which you'll be seeing on October the 11th. So with that, Suzette, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, and City Manager Bob Kowitz. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. And you also received a memo from us that identified each of the streets that we are proposing for 2014. So, but I wanted to go over how we came up with that list, and more importantly, some historical information relative to our resurfacing program. So our system consists of 190 lane miles. 94% of that is asphalt, 6% concrete. We evaluate our streets every five years. We use an outside consulting firm to complete that evaluation process, and they evaluate both the surface condition as well as the subsurface. So the, in 2007, we had a five-year improvement plan that we completed in 2015, I'm sorry, in 2012. So it actually took us a little longer. The program was actually adopted in 2006, and it took us six years to complete the five-year plan. And some of that has to do with anytime we have a development, an economic development project, it may actually increase the priority of a street. So it took us a little longer, and we're also limited by the amount of funding that we have each year to complete the streets. So in 2013 and 14, we developed our program based on the water main priorities, which we always use, the street conditions, and then we conducted automatic tours. And then we also, once again, are kind of bound by the funding availability. We're going to present an updated four-year plan, and that will cover 2014 to 2017, and that we will present to council in the spring. It actually will be January, February of 2014, when we come back to you with a four-year plan. So it's a little dark, but the, this is the slide, I believe, that's in the budget that basically looks at, it splits up the city, and it kind of identifies how many lane miles, the percentage of lane miles that we have in each ward, along with the primary routes. And so we have adopted the philosophy that the primary routes belong to all of Evanston. So when, because they're the major thoroughfares that run through the city. And then on the next slide, you see the number of square yards by ward that we have completed for 2010 to 2013. So basically, the last four years previous to 2014, this is where the money has been spent. So if I go back to the lane miles, and I mean, you should be able to see one to the other, but the primary routes, 42% is the number of lane miles, and we spent about 41%. We've resurfaced 41% of those primary routes. And I'm going to just go quickly through ward by ward. The first ward, 3% of the lane miles, 2010 to 2013, 3.6%. The second ward represents 9%, and 11.67% was resurfaced in the last three years. Ward three is 5%, and 8.21% was completed. Ward five, 5%, I'm sorry, ward four, sorry, ward four is 5%, and 4.68% was resurfaced. Ward five is 4%, and 7.94% was resurfaced. Ward six is 10%, and 3.94% was resurfaced.
Excuse me, Director Robinson, Alderman Fisk has a question.
Thanks. Suzette, could you just clarify for me, are these numbers, the 7% and 6%, are those excluding the streets that you were talking about being the public thoroughfares that?
That represents the biggest pie. The biggest pie is the-
Okay, so the 3% in the first ward, for example, wouldn't include Sheridan Road or Sherman Avenue or downtown streets that everyone uses?
That's correct. These are, they're the residential streets or secondary routes. Primary routes, it's real easy to kind of delineate them because there are snow routes. They got the primary snow route signs on them. Those are the, they represent the primary thoroughfares in the city. So I think I left off at ward six. Ward six at 10%, 3.94. Ward seven is 9%, and 7.47 has been resurfaced. Ward eight is 6%, 4.59. And ward nine is 7%, and 6.88 over the last three years resurfaced. Now, when we identify, when we take a look at, I'm sorry, when we take a look at the different wards and how much money we spend, we try to take into account, we try to do as much as we can to try to balance the dollars spent, but also looking at where the need is. So it's a delegate balance, and I think by the numbers, we haven't done that bad. We've done, we've done pretty good in terms of trying to address the main issues across the city. So that was, this chart here represents roughly how much money that translates into. So that's the dollars spent per ward to resurface the streets. So that's what that next table represents. So moving forward to 2014, our rehabilitation strategies are the same. We do the minor patching and crack filling, grinding, and surface overlay. That's what we do for maintenance purposes in neighborhood streets. We'll do some spot curb and gutter work as well. The arterial streets, grinding, a larger or a deeper overlay, major base repair is also done in the block curb and gutter. And then we can do a major reconstruction program where we actually replace the base entirely. And then the water main replacement, which happens, we have, I think that's separated out where we do the water main replacement and improvements that also, you know, replaces the water main as well. So going forward for 2014, so this is the way the square yards are split out based on the tours with each of you and the funding that we have available. So that's not done by percentage, but just by the square ward, square yards, and the largest blue piece represents the primary routes again, which is the major portion of our project. And then I went a step further to take a look at the, from the primary board pie. So this is where those streets fall within the primary ward pie. And one of the reasons why I wanted to show you that, because if you look back at this pie, you'll see the ninth ward has 0%. Because in meeting with the aldermen, she wanted to resurface Oakton, and that was the priority. And so we raised that priority, and so that's why the largest piece of that is the ninth ward resurfacing of Oakton. And so that's why the largest piece of that is the ninth ward resurfacing of Oakton. Yes?
Oakton is part of the eighth ward also.
Yes, it is. And in our chart, if you look in the chart, it says 8/9, but...
I know. I read that.
So... And then we went on to show you the dollars per ward. And just so you know, I prepared this data. A couple of the Aldermen in our tours asked me certain questions about things, so that's why I'm kind of providing you additional data and background. It was at your request. And so then we also looked at the dollars by funding source. So you can see where the money is coming from. So we have CIP, MFT, and water and sewer for 2014. This pie sometimes has additional money that can be federal grants, TIF dollars. But we don't have any TIF projects this year for resurfacing that are earmarked at this point.
You mean for 2014?
For 2014. That's correct. So we have in the pipeline and Orington, the resurfacing of Orington, which downtown that we have scheduled for 2015, earmarked for 2015 at this point. We really felt that downtown needed a break from us. So we are going to resurface a part of Sherman, and that's as far as downtown goes for this, for 2014. So those are the CIP dollars that we're spending per ward. And then you also have a chart that shows the water and sewer per ward. And the last slide is... Well, next to the last slide is MFT per ward. And we use primarily... The MFT, we use primarily on residential streets almost. I would say 99% of the time, MFT dollars, the motor fuel tax dollars, are dedicated toward our residential program. And so our... In development, developing the 2014 to 2017 Street Improvement Program, the consultant completed the roadway evaluation, which we used the last two years as a part of our tour. We are completing the utility coordination for 2013. We'll have a draft plan drawn up in the fall of 2013 and presented to council. And once the plan is finalized in early spring, we'll begin our surveying. We want to get a little bit ahead of ourselves because one of the things that... In not having an approved five-year plan, and why it's so important to us is because a lot of times, funding becomes available and is short fuse funding. And so they want shovel-ready projects, projects that we have on a shelf. We don't have anything on a shelf right now. And part of the reason why is because we don't have that forward-looking plan. So if we can go through and start doing the surveys, we do our design work in-house, 90% of it. So we have projects sitting on the shelves. When they're looking for shovel-ready projects or quick turnaround grants, we'll be in a better position to be able to respond to those. So that's why that part is important as well. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Suzette. Next, Marty Lyons is here. We have the actuarial report for our Police and Fire Pension Funds. We're asking the council this evening to receive that report and provide some guidance to us for budgeting purposes. Mr. Lyons?
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Clerk Green, Manager Bobquitz, Marty Lyons, CFO. Before you, you have the annual actuarial report. And I know you want to hear more from the actuary than you want to hear from me. But so I have about five or six bullet points just to run through on the report to call your attention to. And that is on page 14 of 588. Just want to note that we're looking at a recommended contribution change downward of approximately $137,000. That's assuming that we change our actuarial assumed rate of return from 7% down to 6.34. So we were very... We were worried about that. When we go to change the rate of return, that means that if it's not coming from investment returns, it's got to come from another source, and that's the city's contribution. So this was very, really good news to see us at a stable level when we are staying on the forefront of having a reasonable investment rate return. The next that I would just point out that we compare is on page 15, is that if we use the state minimum, using the projected unit credit method, we would be funding $3.8 million less. And when you look at our long-term funding strategies, that $3.8 million would only result in a lower funding level, a lower true funding level over time. We would just continue to dig a deeper hole. So neither Pension Board or the City Treasurer is recommending using the projected unit credit method. Then finally, on page 16 of the report, just to make note, if we'd stayed at the 7%, and if you may recall, we said we would reevaluate the interest rate every three years, and so we did. So we're in the fourth year. We went to 6.34. If we had stayed at 7%, it would have been approximately a $700,000 difference in the funding rate, just that 1/4%. So our funding stayed constant when we projected lower investment returns into the future rather than having a decrease.
Marty, excuse me, Alderman Wilson. Oh, okay.
So finally, there's a long-term reason also to continue looking at this interest rate, and it's twofold. One, Moody's used an approximate 5.6% when they looked at our bond rating, saying if Evanston's pensions only earn 5.6%, then their unfunded liability goes up. So the outside world is saying, "Don't use such high, you know, such high rates," in their opinion. And we're responding to that like we should be by going down to the 6.34. As noted in the report, Fitch, the other group that rates us, they said 7% was okay. I bring them both up because it's still not an exact science when you're projecting 30 years. But I think we're on the right track in continuing to look at that interest rate critically. And the second reason for looking at it is, in two years, the Government Accounting Standards Board will change how we look at pension finance. And the biggest change is going to be that the unfunded liability will go on our balance sheet. So that means that it'll get set up against the value of this building, the total value of money that we have in the bank. We will put them all in the mix, so it won't be set aside in a trust fund. We will have that liability on our books. So the more that we take steps to limit that liability now, the better off we are. And with that, I will also either answer questions or turn it over to Art Tepfer and/or Tim Schoolmaster or Darren Doherty. Both pension presidents are here.
All right. Alderman Rainey, did you want to ask a question now?
I just want to ask Marty. Marty, why can't the rating agencies or the, you know, the national... What is it?
Government Accounting Standards Board.
Why can't we get everybody on the same page regarding the interest rate? Why can't that happen?
My assistant, Art Tepfer.
Because, I mean, it just makes absolutely no common sense to me that they can't.
Hi.
Hi.
Marty did a very good job in trying to explain the difference between accountants and actuaries. And that's the real problem. I have to tell you, I don't want to sit here and listen to an actuary talk at 9 o'clock at night, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have. Let me address this one. The Government Accounting Standards Board has finally decided that the funding of pension plans, retirement plans, should be differentiated from the financing of these plans. For years, back since the mid-'90s, '97, '98, they were together. And that's where we had this term "unfunded liability" become part of our vocabulary. It's always been around before, but that's when it really started to affect cities because the Government Accounting Standards Board issued a statement that said, "Here's how we're going to account for these pension plans on your financial statements." Marty has referred to the new Government Accounting Standard Board pronouncements, which will be effective in a couple of years. And they have decided that everything that we've known about funding pension plans, which the state tells us must be done by statute, it leaves it to the actuaries to determine, are now the realm of the auditors and the accountants. And, well, I guess I could borrow from the old actuarial joke. There are three kinds of actuaries. Number one, those who can count. Number two, those who can't count. The story that we have here is that the auditors are reasonably unfamiliar with the way actuarial science works. But actuaries are also somewhat unfamiliar. There are two schools of thought with regard to actuarial assumptions as they relate to the interest rate assumption, and that's the one that everybody's focusing on. The traditionalist, of which I happen to be a member of the camp, states that we don't have to really worry about the pension plan. We can make long, broad-term assumptions because we're talking about a 60- to 80-year period from the time that the current employee will receive his last pension payment. So we're really long-term in our view. And if we go back and look back 50 years, or 30 or 40 years to the 1980s, we'll see that interest rates were 17% on my money market fund, that the market is cyclical. The current group, which is somewhat influencing GASB, not as much as they are influencing Moody's, is that in financing pension plans, we should view them as a profit center, a marketable asset, and therefore, we should be using current market rates. GASB didn't go all the way. Moody's has gone that way. Moody's believes that we should currently be using 4% as a long-term investment assumption. Traditionalists don't buy into this. This is a financially economic approach to actuarial math. There are definitely two camps. So GASB sort of split the middle. They said, "We're going to fund what the actuaries tell us we can fund, but we're going to report somewhere between what the actuaries think we should be doing, the traditionalists, and the financial economists, who say that we should be looking at this as a marketable asset." And that's how they settled in on their GASB rates. GASB will force us downward, the traditionalists. 6.34% will not be an acceptable rate for financial reporting. It will be something less than 6.34%, but it will not be as low as 4%, which is what Moody's will be doing. There is no right answer, which is what I live with every day. But that's as simple as I can make this. That's why there is no standard. GASB tries to put a standard, and they say, "We're divorcing the funding. Fund it the way you want to fund it. Do what your state says. Do what your law says." If you're in the private sector, we have the FASB who said the same thing. But for comparable purposes, so that we can look at Evanston and look at Wilmette and look at something else, we're going to tell you that this is the rate you're going to have to use. And that is their attempt to do this, not quite as bad as the financial economists, who say, "Let's go down to 4." We'll be in the 5.5%, 6%, 6.25% range, more or less, on all pension funds, if that helps.
Alderman Grover?
I thought Alderman Wilson? Any questions early on? Oh, all right. I did have a question then. You suggest, maybe it's Mr. Lyons, maybe you, Professor Tepfer, that the rating agencies may respond favorably to our downward adjustment of our projected investment return. How do rating agencies regard our efforts to turn this barge with larger... With contributions that exceed either the statutory minimum or the GASB recommendation? Does that play into it at all?
They don't.
Sincerity doesn't count for anything?
No. Nope. Funding is funding. Actuaries are responsible for funding. Rating agencies are responsible for rating a city's finances.
The ratings agencies had nice things to say. They said that our management was great, and they downgraded us. You know, they could have taken us down two levels. So that's not to say that I don't want to discount the efforts that we've made. I think that was a real possibility. So the efforts have not been wasted. If we had done nothing, I think a two-level drop would have been a much more likely scenario.
So some kind of acknowledgement that we have, as I said, begun to change the trajectory of our long-term liability of...
I don't understand how the rating agencies work, so I really can't comment on this. I will tell you, from the actuarial side of the funding of the retirement plans, you're doing a fantastic job. We're seeing improvement in funding percentages, which I don't put a lot of credibility in what the funding percentage is because we all know that we're all going to be 100% funded in 2020. I mean, we're all going to be 100% funded in 2033. I mean, we're all going to be 90% funded in 2045. So I don't worry about funding percentages. We're on the right track. We're managing the assets well. The city is making good contributions. The police officers and firefighters are doing their job. They're not dying. They're not becoming disabled. They're not... All of the bad things that are supposed to be happening, salaries are moving along nicely. I will tell you that we still have some issues. You need roughly, on the current level of assets, you need roughly 11% to 12% return just to pay the pensioners. That's a problem. That's not a nice balance to be in. So we have to keep putting money in, and pensions keep going up. More people retire, more and people are hired because you still need the people on the street to do the work. It's not like we've Pollyanna. It's still a tough thing to do. But it's a good fund, and it's moving upward in the direction it's supposed to because the trustees are doing a good job. They had good investment returns last year. Actuaries work in a different world. The argument is, if your assumptions as a group are good, are the assumptions okay? Even if you are assuming 12% interest, which is ludicrous, and you've got all these other pieces that are... But everything works out, and it's really nice. Your contribution stays very constant and does what it's supposed to. In other words, does the aggregate count, or do you have to look at each of them individually? And there's no right answer. I like to look at each of them individual, but keep the aggregate in mind. Last year, we did really well. The measure we use is if your expected accrued liability and your actual accrued liability are within 3% of each other, you've done well. We were less than 1% on the police, I think, and about 1% on the fire. So we're really doing well. That doesn't mean that the assumptions are correct. It means they were right for this year.
That's the gain-loss assessment?
That's the gain-loss analysis that we do, right. That's the only measure that we have to see how the assumptions are working. And the argument is, "Well, let's lower the interest rate." Now, that should produce gains if this happens last year. But if it's a bad year, we're going to have losses. Doesn't mean it's wrong. We have to find trends and try to establish them. We're in a good, solid set of assumptions. I think the move to 6.34% was not absolutely necessary, but what the city wanted, and that's fine. I have no problem with that. My range is broad. You said, "Let's do it at 4," I'd be saying, "You're working for GASB," or Moody's, or something like that. And if you said, "Let's use 8," I'd say, "No. It's just not acceptable anymore." So there's no right answer. The right answer is what you're doing, right approach. Entry-age, normal funding, forget the projected unit credit, build the level, and manage the funds well, and manage the people well. Does that help?
Mr. Schoolmaster?
Mr. Schoolmaster is declining.
Unless there's questions for him.
No. You want to finish your report, Marty?
I am done.
You are done.
Those are the bullets I wanted to make.
Alderman Wilson, do you have a comment to make?
First of all, I really appreciate the change in the assumed rate of return. That's one of the biggest problems that I've had psychologically with where we're at and where we're going. Alderman Burris isn't here, but she'd probably be chiming in on that. And so I appreciate that move. I think that's significant. In some ways, I wish it were a little bit closer... A little bit closer to what Moody's is looking for, but certainly not 4%, but just a little bit. And I guess my net is, I could talk about it all night. I could discuss philosophy, but nobody wants to hear that. We've talked about it for years. Personally, I don't want to go below the amount that we put in last time, which is... Personally, I don't want to go below the amount that we put in last time, which is 100-something over what the recommended amount is. So to me, that's sort of the bottom line. I don't want to go below that. I prefer to put a little bit more in than that. Again, as Alderman Grover said, I think there was some recognition in the reports and the downgrade report and those materials that acknowledged efforts in looking at what other people are doing. Other people are below 7, so, you know, we're not the first ones to do that. So that's my two cents. Like to keep it at that amount, or maybe kick in a little bit more if possible.
Alderman Wilson, I agree with you, and I believe the city manager would like a straw poll at least of who feels that way, so that his budget challenges would be at least more comprehensible. Alderman Grover?
Alderman Rainey.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see who got there first. Congratulations, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I'm going to speak against Alderman Wilson's proposal and go with the recommendation of our consultant.
Thank you, Alderman.
And after the poll, I'm going to argue why the burden that imposes on the taxpayers in this town. I am telling you, as our, I know things are getting a little better, but as our real estate values diminish, I have seen my tax bill just skyrocket out of control. And I am not a person who is especially struggling, but there are people underwater who are paying extraordinary amount of taxes, and every penny we add to their burden. And when you look at the total general fund tax levy, the percentage given to the pension funds, which I heartily endorse funding to the extent we're capable, it is a gigantic burden. And I think adding one penny more to that is just plain wrong. And I hope the rest of this council agrees with that, or at least a majority agree. I can't afford another penny. I cannot imagine how a bunch of other people in this community can afford another penny. This last tax bill was just outrageous.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Straw poll-wise, I'm comfortable with the 6.75% assumed rate of return, and I guess would like to see more of what it would mean if we funded at the same levels last year as opposed to the recommended. I think the difference is $130,000. It's a lot of money.
I believe that's correct. Alderman, thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would go along with Alderman Wilson in trying to maintain at least last year's level. I agree that 6.75% is certainly another goal we're working toward. But I would hate to go backwards, I think, forward, and even encourage maybe looking at even more than that, not to upset the tax structure, but to just make an earnest attempt at bringing this down.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, does anyone else want to comment on that? Alderman Fisk?
Yes, for straw poll purposes, 6.75% is fine with me. Last time, I supported even more than what we finally agreed to put in, so I wouldn't want to go below that.
Thank you. All right.
Anyone else?
Alderman Holmes?
Well, I would certainly want to go with the recommendation made by staff in the actuary. I'm just not ready to make that. I made the thing last year. I'm in the same predicament, probably even more so than Alderman Rainey, because she's not struggling, but I do. So I, and I have many, many residents who do. So I think that as long as we're doing a fair part, that all the citizens are getting a fair shake, so.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
I agree with the 6.75%, and I share Alderman Rainey and Alderman Holmes' view that I would go with the recommended amount.
And Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question about the gain-loss analysis from this year. Do you recall, Mr. Tepfer, what it was last year? Was it under 1% for both funds last year? I don't remember.
Don't recall. I'm sorry.
Yeah, neither do I. I was hoping somebody would.
I do recall from last year, it was very, very similar. We were right on last year. We actually had, and that was a year where December 31st was a bad day in the market, so it skewed the returns a little bit.
But we smoothed assets.
Yeah, so it was like a 1.5 or something for that one year, but because we were able to smooth over a four-year period. But it was still, because I remember your discussion on the exact topic last year, where you had referenced.
Yeah, we used 1.1% last year on interest rate. Therefore, we had offsetting gains coming from the other assumptions.
Was it fire pension fund or the?
I'm looking at the police fund at 1.1, and the fire fund was at?
So some change, but all within the realm of the reasonable for these deviations?
It was 1.9 for the fire.
Oh, so actually, it's gotten closer, much closer this year, then?
Yeah, but this year, we're, you know, at 11%. It's just a number.
We lost that argument last year.
Well, the percentage returns are just, you know, they're simple returns. Money comes in, money goes out. Long-term, guys. Not year to year. Really, you've got to look there. You can't look here.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, just if we add $130,000, if you take a home, which is a very, maybe a condominium, that has a $300,000 tax bill, that ends up being, for the city portion of that tax bill, 216 taxpayers paying their total contribution to the city at, if it's $130,000, additional dollars. I think, you know, that's just extraordinary to think, if you can think along those lines. It's just an enormous number of people, households, that are paying that burden, total burden.
Thank you. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, city manager, you've got the information you're going to get from us tonight.
Are we still doing an accept and place on file?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move this.
Go right ahead.
All right. Madam Mayor, under the special order of business, I'd like to move proposed 2000, oh, no, that's the wrong one. We need to do that, too. Approve the police and fire pension fund actuarial report. Staff recommends that city council review and approve the January 1, I'm going to read the whole thing for the record, 2013 actuarial evaluation for usage and the 2013 tax levy for police and firefighting funding purposes. The recommended annual actuarial required contribution, ARC, as determined by this study, is $6,239,481 for the firefighter pension fund and $8,358,924 for the police pension fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
I think we beat it today.
Seeing no lights on for further discussion, city clerk, would you call the role to approve the January 1, 2013, police and firefighter pension actuarial report?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The report is accepted. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
What about the street resurfacing? Should I just?
We can just put it on the consent agenda.
Just lost it all. Just give me one minute. I just wiped it out here. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under special order of business, I would like to request council approval of the proposed 2014 street resurfacing and water main replacement program. Funding is provided by the water fund, $3,338,300. Motor fuel tax fund, $1,400,000. And the capital improvement fund, $2,515,228. The administration and public works, oh, the first item of business for the council is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, July 22, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, August 12. The administration public works committee met this evening and recommend your approval of payroll through August 11, $3,118,740.84. Through August 25, $2,882,62.15. The city bills through September 10, $6,412,612.87. Credit card activity through July 31, $149,281.35. We ask your approval of parking garage access and revenue control contract with Data Park for the city's three downtown parking garages from August 1 through December 31, in the amount of $5,550 per month, for a total 2013 cost of $27,750. Your approval is requested for a rock salt contract extension with Morton Salt for one year, the purchase of up to 8,000 tons of rock salt at a cost of $60.61 per ton for the winter season totaling $484,880. Next, approval of the Arbitech fungicide purchase from Rainbow Tree Care Scientific Advancements for the elm tree injection program. 82 gallons of the fungicide will be purchased at $385 per gallon for a total purchase of This is sole source. They're the only people who provide this. Your approval is requested for the contract with O'Hara Construction, Inc., for the 2013 police headquarters interior improvements. The base bid in the amount of $48,742.84 is recommended. This is an Evanston firm. It's for action tonight. We ask your approval of Resolution 53R13, accepting maximum award amount of $46,171 from Age Options to fund a congregate senior meal program at the Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan. Approval is also requested for the 2013-14 renewal of the contract award to Catholic charities, Lunch &amp; More, for the senior meals program. This is the provider of the actual meals. The Levy Senior Center and Fleetwood Jordan Community Center will receive this for a period of October 2013 through September 2014. For the not-to-exceed amount of $4.36 per lunch meal, the contract value is projected to be $44,868. We ask your approval to introduce Ordinance 88013, which amends the hotel motel tax definition. The amended ordinance clears up ambiguity in the city's hotel motel tax code and associated tax collection responsibilities for online travel companies. We ask you to approve introduction of Ordinance 90013, proposed revisions to Title III, Chapter IV, the liquor control regulations. Is this being held in committee? I can't remember.
Yes.
It's being, we're not, yeah, okay. We're holding that. Sorry for that. Next, Ordinance 94013 is for action, decreases the number of Class O liquor licenses as a result of Whole Foods going to another license. This is for the 1640 Chicago Avenue Whole Foods, and it reduces the number of licenses to two from three. Ordinance 95013 is for action, and increases the number of Class N liquor licenses for issuance to Whole Foods at 1640 Chicago Avenue, and increases the number from seven to eight. Resolution 38R, wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It skipped. Okay, there we go. Planning and development committee met tonight. This is Ordinance 98013. It is for action, and it is granting a special use, no, for introduction. It is granting a special use for resale establishment called Minio Chic Boutique at 1900 Asbury Avenue. Next, I believe is probably off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Alderman Wynn, do you want to keep this off?
We moved to introduction.
Did we move? Okay. This is for introduction, Ordinance 99013, granting major zoning relief to establish open parking in the side, in the street-side yard at 1202 Sherman Avenue. This is for introduction. Approval is requested for our first vacation rental license at 2353 Ridge Avenue. This is a single-family residence owned and operated by Stephen and Margaret Rome. Vacation rental meets all of the standards and procedures for license approval. Action is requested on Ordinance 93013, granting a special use for a Type II restaurant protein bar at 1622 Sherman Avenue. Human services committee has reported and requested approval of the township of Evanston August bills. The amount of those bills, $155,439.38. Resolution 38R13 is for action, an intergovernmental agreement with Evanston Township. This is on or off?
Off.
Off. This is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the human services chair. Under economic development committee, the committee requests your approval of Resolution 52R13, financial assistance for now we're cooking. This is a $60,933 grant for the period of September 1 through December 31, 2014, to assist with the implementation of the formal food business incubator program. Your approval is also requested for West Village Business Association's application for the Evanston Great Merchants Grant Program in the amount of $7,875 for fiscal year 2013 projects. The mayor has not recommended any appointments, and therefore, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The motion passes. Alderman Rainey, could we have administration and public works, please?
What number did we take off?
Didn't take off any, listen.
No, it's something. A6?
Yep, yep, yep. A6. Madam Mayor, the Liquor Control Commission Regulation Recommendation, we've got a lot of questions. And also, the city attorney has agreed that he's going to send us some red-line documents having to do with the changes he's proposing. And we had some significant discussion, but we'll be on top of it at our next meeting.
Okay, that's terrific, because when you had questions, I went, "Oops, I haven't read it since we originally passed it at the Liquor Commission, so I'm not too..."
Well, and then we'll all get the same information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you for the work of the commission.
And thank Mr. Farrar for trying to straighten this out.
That is really quite a... That's, that is really quite a mess.
Yeah. Thank you. Alderman Wynn, Planning and Development, please. We did?
Oh, yes, H2.
Oh, it's H2, okay, I'm sorry. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution 38-R-13, intergovernmental agreement with Evanston Township High School District 202. Staff recommend city, un-council authorized city manager to further negotiate and execute an intergovernmental agreement with Evanston Township High School for the creation of a safe school zone. This agenda item was held August 12, and our staff is recommending that this be postponed for consideration until after the September 23 meeting of the city council. And I think that's due to the city school liaison committee meeting, I believe, tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, okay. And where is that meeting? Here?
Button, so confusing. It'll be tomorrow night here in the council chamber at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. All right, does anyone want to speak? Alderman Braithwaite?
We need a motion. Which is holding it, right?
Okay. Could you turn your mic on?
I'll move that we hold it until the September 23 date.
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to hold this item until the September 23 council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, congratulations, we are at call of the wards. Alder, Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we stand up with these microphones? Okay. Do we need to hold them up? We can just talk. I think Alderman Wilson and I would like to thank everyone for meeting the challenges on Davis Street. I'm sure he's had tons of emails, he may talk about this. I've also had tons of emails, and, but I want to thank the city staff, I think they've tried their best, and to keep ahead of the game. We've had some issues come up that were unexpected and set us back. I was happy, although surprised to see that this, the flashing sign was saying that we were 45% complete on Davis Street. I was reassured to, that that number is actually a little bit higher than 45%. But for everybody in the first ward, I want to thank the property owners and shopkeepers for coping, but especially I want to thank the residents of the downtown for their patience. It's been very hard, we've had several issues that have come up even today. City manager is going to work on those and make everything hopefully better. But this is a 100-year project, and we're really lucky to be doing this all together, lucky that, to have all of the infrastructure and utility improvements that we're going to have, and hopefully it will be peaceful and quiet for the next little bit, and I was very happy to hear that Orington Avenue is going to be put off for a little while. So, thank you very much, and thanks to everybody who was at the ward meeting last week.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just quickly like to invite the residents of the second ward out to our September ward meeting, which is going to be September 12, at the Joseph Hill District 65 building. We'll have staff reports from the library, health department, and also prime report from our PST officer, Reggie Napier. And I'm also encouraging any of the city council members that would like to come out to further discuss the intergovernmental agreement between the ETHS and the city of Evanston. We're having, it's an opportunity for residents to ask whatever questions they'd like of the ETHS staff and members of the school board that'll be present. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
I wanted to thank the city staff members, especially Johanna Niden and also city manager Wally Bobkowitz, for helping to bring Trader Joe's to Evanston. It's here at last, it's been very busy, I encourage everyone to come. It was a wonderful opening, and it's been a great weekend, so we're, at last, there where they belong. The other thing I'd like to do is just thank Marty Lyons and Ricky Voss and all of the other city staff who helped make the Booster Palooza for the ETHS Booster Club such a stunning success. It was on the 12th floor of the Sherman Avenue Garage. I've heard from the, the chairs that everything went incredibly smoothly, it was a really fun, fun party to go to. The mayor and I were comparing notes, so, but that really happened because of the city staff, so thank you for all of that hard work.
I would like to say it also happened because the mayor wisely gave Alderman Wynn full control of which parking garage to use. I had okayed Maple, and you said that Sherman would be better, and it was fabulous. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Great, Booster Palooza, great time. Alderman Fisk, thanks again for the comments about Davis Street. It is a challenge, I'm there almost every single day, I appreciate everybody's patience, and it's going to be awesome when it's done, and it's really not fun while it's in the process, so it's a lot of challenges. If you are a resident or a business owner, make sure that you communicate your concerns or problems, and the city staff is being as responsive as they can be. It's a lot of moving parts, a lot of contractors, subcontractors, utilities, all of that moving at the same time, but it's going to be really nice when it's done. I also want to thank Natalie Watson and everybody involved with the Walk and Roll Evanston Group. They had their first shared streets event on Dempster two weekends ago, and were kind enough to invite myself, and I think Alderman Grover, and maybe some other Aldermen, to just kind of hang out and have an opportunity to talk to people who had questions and thoughts, and a very fun and interesting event as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Just a couple of things, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to say that Marty didn't forget the fifth ward, and there is a session in the fifth ward, it's at 9:27.
Noise.
People often forget that that is a part of the fifth ward, so we just want to make sure that people understand that. However, I do want to say that when we talk about Twitter and Facebook, we've got to just remember that there are a whole lot of other folk, including me, who don't do any of that, so that, we've got to make sure that we can reach out, and I know that that's an effort to do that. The other thing is, this is sort of sentimental, but I want to say congratulations to Benison's Bakery again, and the reason why is because this is their 75th year, and I realize that coming up this year, it would have been my anniversary, and my wedding cake was made there, as many of my birthday cakes since then, and my family still, we still shop there. My mother started shopping there, and now my daughter shops there, so it's just a family tradition with us, with Benison's Bakery, so I'm just congratulating them on their 75th birthday.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
No report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to remind the members of the council and the Community Development Block Grant Committee that proposals will be reviewed again tomorrow night, just a reminder. Also, on Thursday is the Howard Hartree TIF Joint Review Board meeting, and so anybody interested in that should show up. And on the ninth, on the 16th, Monday, at 9:30 AM, the Skokie Courthouse in Room 206, the trial for the Costulis murder will begin. We've been going since September 2011, every single month, except for August 2013, there was no hearing, that a group of citizens have been attending court every single month since then. And there has actually been a hearing every single month since September 11, since September 2011. So, that's a big day for us, and anybody who'd like to join us just to give the prosecution a boost, we would appreciate it, and so would the family, they've never missed either.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Oh, thank you, Alderman Holmes is reminding me that on September 11 at 7:30 in the morning at Fire Station 1 on Emerson, there will be a 9/11 ceremony. Please, everyone feel free to come. That concludes this meeting. If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So, move, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.